Where's the flag?
In the corner, so. Well, good evening, everybody. If you'd all join us for the pledge allegiance, the flag's in the back corner over there.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
All right. We have a full, full house for a change here. Thank you all for coming out. We're gonna open this evening with a public hearing. We have several warrant articles or to, to go over. I'm sure you're all here to discuss those warrant articles. So what I guess what we'll ask is that as we go through them, we can come up to, we have the mic, the moderator's mic. We can get introductions or we can bring the mic around, whatever's easier. And we would like to start out with, you know, Damascata citizens. We do have some folks in on Zoom, so we're gonna try to kinda see how that's gonna work for us to get some Zoom input. So with that, we could get started, so. So does everybody have a copy of the warrant articles at this point? Everybody get a copy and everything? We've got a few things, a few things happening here. Article number two, which is a property exchange with the What do you need? Yeah. We're moderator, so yeah. Which is a property exchange with Gilbert, Gilbert Gay LLC. Do we have anybody here that has any comments, questions on that particular item? I don't see any hands anywhere. Yep. Jeff, we have anybody on Zoom that
Just Matt.
Just Matt? All right, so, so he's good. No, no hands raised for Matt?
Shari is also online, Shari Sage.
Maybe?
What was that, Matt?
Shari is also online here.
I, yeah. I think it's Shari Sage. Hey. We're Jeff's doing a great job trying to get us all coordinated with several different sound systems, so. We put some pressure on him today, so. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Mic is off, yeah. All right. You're not seeing anything, Jeff, if I can, yeah, okay. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll move on. Article three, which is the, the ARPA funds, distribution of the ARPA funds. Does anybody have any, any public hearing questions, comments on distribution of the ARPA funds? I don't see any hands raised anywhere. Nobody's coming up? Yeah. Jeff, look good on Zoom? Okay, yeah, well, we'll move on to article four. This is the, this is the big one. This is the bond issue for side, road improvement, sidewalk improvements. Do we have any, any public comment, questions, concerns on the bond? Yes, sir. Step right up. Let's get you a, let's get you a mic and you can, just, just on it. He's got a mic for you, so give us an introduction there.
A wilder hunt. I live on the Bellwood Dairy Road and my understanding is the Bellwood Dairy Road is part of this. And I was, would like to hear from whoever knows what's going to happen.
Sure, sure. That's a good question. Can you bring us a feed on that, Josh?
While they're, they're gonna, they're gonna mill it, grind it. And kind of, I think on that one, we're gonna put a little shim on that one. I don't have that piece of paper right in front of me and I think it's an inch and a half overlay after that. Some of that is shoulder wear as well. So it should be it measured twenty, it was twenty-one feet and that was what we were gonna leave it at, was twenty-one feet.
Well, getting right to the point, there's a culvert at the end of Oyster Creek Lane and Bellwood Dairy. And starting back three years ago, I talked to the maintenance department about fixing it because when the culverts were put in Oyster Creek, the trucks backed over the end of the culvert. Eventually it's filled with, you know, debris. It doesn't work. And last spring I was, I don't know what you don't, the answer was, we'll get to it in a couple of months. Well, nothing happened.
Okay, well, we'll make, we'll make sure that things get taken care of before this, this project goes ahead because culvert should be taken care of first.
Well, I wanna make sure that that culvert or that was attended to, you know, at least in a timely manner or during this project or however you folks see fit. There's also a culvert that goes under, you know, the Bellwood Dairy Road, just to the south. And I think that was repaired. I don't know that it was replaced, but I think it's, it has some age on it.
The one by Branch Road is the one you're talking about. On, on the second, the second culvert.
Correct.
Yes. Yep.
I just, you know, want to make sure that, well, the issue was brought up and, yep, it gets looked at.
So while there is that culvert working, the one that's closest to the, to the second, the Oyster Creek?
I think it's partially working. They work sometimes.
I mean, that, you know, that's a big issue. We gotta make sure all your culverts and your drainage is all working before we do any of that work.
That's like, that's my point of speaking. Right, no, it, it will be addressed while
Because the, Joshua, the Public Works Committee has a working list on some of that stuff, like culverts and whatnot, something that has been inspected. So they can revisit that and make sure it's on the, on the list because it's
And part of the funds for the bond include some of the ditching and shoulder work as well.
Thank you.
That just got replaced.
That one did.
Yeah. Again. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns, either Damascata citizens or concerned citizens at this time on article four? Don't see anybody yet. Jeff, Zoom's looking. Right, okay.
I get, I get a comment. I'd like to see us do is on some of this, like having a reclaimed shoulder. It didn't work out on the Bristol Road and I think that there's some area that we could have some cost savings on this. I just think that you gotta have faith and that the amount of money that we have, we really need to look at what we have here in front of us and what we can do that would actually save us money so that maybe we could use some of that money in, in other places in town.
Thank you, yeah. Well, we can move right along here if there's no more, oh, no, we have somebody in the back here. Come on up. Let's get your mic and yeah, absolutely. We'll grab you on, on mic.
Get a mic.
We, we have a, on, on the bond issue. So we, we had a contractor reach out and do a, an estimate. So we're, we're basing that off of that. I believe it may have come out in the packet. Did you get the full packet in the email? Are you, they've been attached to that, but yeah, there's a breakdown. But the process right now, it still needs to go back and be built into a, you know, into a, what am I trying to say? Bid, thank you, Tom, into a bid package. So what Mark was referring to too is that there's, maybe there's still some more refinement that, that, that can be done there. So we're taking some rough estimates off of a contractor's estimate and working off of that, so. I don't see anybody else, so, well, we want to go into the special town meeting at this point. If there's other questions or comments? Becky, that's you, right?
You're up, Becky.
All right. We'll turn it over to Becky here to get us started.
Becky, you need my mic.
We'll get you a mic, Becky. Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Jeff. You, you can, you can say
At the end, you have to do a number.
I called this special town meeting to order. First order of business is we need a moderator so I could have a nomination.
I'll nominate Lorraine Farady.
And a second? All right, if three of you, I think I put a thing, a ballot by your spaces. I know. All right, Lorraine Farady wins the vote.
Just made it, all right.
All right, I, Lorraine Farady, do swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof, so help me God. I do swear that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities the duties incumbent on me as moderator of the special town meeting according to the Constitution of the United States, laws of the State of Maine and the Charter and ordinances of Damascata, so help me God.
I know.
I think I'm far enough away that I'm not gonna, anybody object if I take my mask off.
You wanna move the podium, Lorraine?
I'll just grab the, grab it, grab it going.
Yeah.
My name is Lorraine Farady. I am a Municipal Association of Maine Certified Town Moderator. And welcome to residents and others. I'm sorry, most of you have done this, but I have to go through it. Please turn off all of your cell phones. The emergency access is in there and over there and there's restrooms up in the hallway there. And I don't, I'm pretty sure I don't need to say this, but you know, we're all gonna be civil and grown up and speak nicely. So first, we're gonna do article two. And article two is to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to exchange properties with Gilbert Gay LLC. Each property being approximately one hundred and seventy-nine square feet to establish the town's ownership of the eastern edge of parking spaces adjacent to the driveway, commonly known as Taco Alley, in exchange for unused parcel adjacent to the town's public restroom and to execute and accept all deeds and documents necessary to accomplish this transaction. Do I have a motion? So moved a second, seconded. All right, is there any discussion on article two? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, raise your little orange or pink or green cards. Right, all those opposed? Looks like the motion carries. Article three, to see what sum the town will vote to appropriate for the following. Stormwater and causeway reconstruction to Miles Street to improve the structural integrity of the main access point to Miles Hospital. The selectmen recommend one hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. Support for stepping stone to build a tiny house, the selectmen recommend sixteen thousand four hundred. Support for Newcastle Damascata Broadband Expansion Committee, the selectmen recommend twelve thousand five hundred. Support for workforce development training at the new Chamber of Commerce offices, the selectmen recommend ten thousand. And purchase of air purification systems for town hall and the police department offices and the selectmen recommend three thousand one hundred dollars. And the selectmen also recommend appropriating two hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, AKA American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, plus a nominal amount of supplemental ARPA funding that the town will be receiving to find, to fund the projects described above. Do I have a motion to approve article three? So moved, we have a second? Seconds, all right. Any discussion of article three? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article three passes. Article four, to see if the town will vote, one, to approve road and sidewalk improvement projects, including engineering design and any other related costs thereto, known as the project. And two, to appropriate a sum not to exceed two million two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars plus any additional premium to provide for the cost of the project. And three, to authorize the treasurer and town manager to issue general obligation securities of the town, including temporary notes in anticipation thereof, in an aggregate principal wait for it, amount not to exceed two million two hundred and fifty-five thousand plus any additional premium and delegate all right, and delegate the treasurer and the town manager the discretion to fix the dates, maturity, denominations, interest rates, places of payment, calls for redemption, premiums, form, and other details of said securities on behalf of the town and to provide for the sale thereof. Do you all have copies of the financial statement? Yes, no? I'll read it quickly. Okay, financial statement of the town of Damascata. The total town indebtedness right now, bonds outstanding as of January twentieth, twenty twenty-two is forty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Bonds authorized and unissued, zero. Bonds to be issued if this vote is approved, two hundred, I'm sorry, two million two hundred and fifty-five thousand, which would be a total of two million three hundred and one thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. The cost at an estimated interest rate of three point five three percent with a fifteen-year term. The estimated cost to this bond issue would be principal, two million two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Interest, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. And the total debt service would be two million nine hundred and two thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars. So do we have a motion for, or is this article four? So moved and a second? Second. Any discussion on article four? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to share that, you know, you're looking at three roads that we're gonna repair and we're gonna try to really get this right because we're gonna be paying for these three roads for fifteen years. And normally it's seven to ten years that you're in a cycle where you do your roads. But being behind, we gotta make sure that we do what we can out there without overspending to get as much as we can for that dollar.
Any other comments or discussion on article four? All right, seeing none. All those in article?
I'm sorry. We went out to a number of financial institutions, I think four altogether. This is the lowest interest rate we could get. I said, I would add that we went out to four financial institutions for the interest rate and this is the lowest one we could get and it's a local bank.
That's good to know. Okay. Any other discussion? No Zooming people, okay. All, hearing none. All those in favor of article four? All those opposed? Motion carries. And I believe that would adjourn the special meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the special town meeting.
Second?
I'll second it.
Anybody opposed to adjourning this? All right, most adjourned.
Thank you, Lorraine. All right.
And however, we're still
All welcome to hang around for the select board meeting. Oh, yeah, no, that was, that was great. Yeah, that was good to get everybody together and yeah, yeah. It's, 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 it's a lot of money to come up with in a short period of time, you know, that's, that's the issue, you know, it's, it's Yeah, right, right. Yeah, that's what we're at. Like, man, that's, that's a hard, that's a
What I understand on that though is, we're gonna, I know we got twelve thousand five hundred. If we were to make it twenty-five like Newcastle does and then try to get a map from Lincoln County, that would put us in better position for the grant, am I right? I guess the numbers should be the same. I guess we're trying to Yeah. Yeah. Well, appreciate the work on it. And I see it here at school because, you know, students don't have that, see them teachers, some of them. Yeah. Yeah, right.
How are you?
Yes. Absolutely. Absolutely. Right. But I think the school is a big absolute, you know, we need to be in that because we, we see what exactly what to say. You know, we have teachers that say, well, I can't even teach them.
I'm gonna call this to order in a second for the, for the meeting, so.
Thanks, David.
Guys all set?
We're all good.
Yeah, all right, so. Okay. We're gonna wait for everybody to calm down here.
Thank you, Lorraine. Yeah.
Jeff, you gonna go?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll call it order. Yeah. Hey.
Good, all right. We will call to order the February sixteenth, select board meeting for the town of Damascata. Going to start with the minutes from February second.
I'll move the minutes of February second.
Okay, Josh. Tom seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries. And let's move on through financial reports. We have payroll warrants forty-three and forty-four.
Payroll warrants forty-three and forty-four.
Second. Lou, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. We'll go to accounts payable. Let's do number forty-five. I'll make a motion to move number forty-five. Tom seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Three, stain, stain, any opposed, non-opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we have AP number forty-six.
Forty-six.
Second. Lou, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Right, that carries through. Okay, I don't believe we have any presentations tonight unless there's anybody in the audience that has anything to bring forth. Yeah, we're all good on Zoom still, Jeff? At least, okay, all right. And through citizens' comments, do we have, we wanna have Matt do a sound check with us?
Jeff, testing one, two, three. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Hey. Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. That's a sound check.
There he is. Matt, do you wanna go down through your, the town manager items?
Is Haas there?
Haas just came through the door, I believe.
He has a, something under citizen comments.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Haas would like to bring you on the mic? Yes. We'll, we'll bring your mic. Hang on a second.
Yeah, bring the mic to him. You wanna do another piece of business first? Good.
Matt, we're gonna give Haas a minute. You wanna go through some of your manager items?
Sure, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, hell, speak up. So, yeah, I'm asking the board to give some thought to the Spirit of America tribute and the annual report recognition. So if you want to vote tonight on that, that's fine, or if you'd like to wait till the next meeting, the March second meeting, that'd, that'd be fine too. You might wanna talk among yourselves and then you, at the next meeting, you do a secret ballot so we could surprise the people with the annual report recognition and the, the Spirit of America recognition.
I think, I think we'll do that, Matt. We can, we can wait till the next, next meeting then, give us a little time to
Okay, I sent you, I, I, I sent you my thoughts on that and be happy to, to reiterate those at some point. There's a citizen meeting on March first here at town hall with Don Garrish to talk about what citizens would like to see and business owners would like to see in your new town manager. So he just has a couple of questions that he's gonna ask people to respond to and I've scheduled that on a Zoom call too in case folks don't wanna be there in person. They can also send on written comments if they'd like.
Okay. And that, Matt, that's been Okay. Um, and that, Matt, that's been advertised and put out and.
Yeah, it's, it's in the, um, the newspaper as a public notice. And we have it on the website, and I believe I sent it out. I may not have yet, but I'll send it out as an email newsletter item to my mailing list. And the next item is a public hearing on the annual town meeting warrant. We've reviewed, uh, we being the staff, have reviewed those various items with the board previously, and, um, but we need to have the, the, uh, public hearing, because, uh, I think the board is going to want to put these on a secret ballot for the annual town meeting. So, in anticipation of that, we need to have the public hearing well before the annual town meeting, so that we can, you know, uh, finalize the, the warrant and, uh, send out the absentee ballots. There's quite a bit of lead time involved. So, that's scheduled for March 16. On February 8th, there was a, a meeting of the broadband committee with the, the two, uh, well, the Newcastle Select Board and the Damascotta Board of Selectmen. Couple of you attended that. I think the bottom line on that is that in order to proceed with a Connect Me grant, um, LCI or Tidewater, they go by either name, uh, needs an additional 108,000, uh, from Damascotta and a similar amount from Newcastle. And the purpose of that would be to, to extend their service area to, um, to, uh, the unserved folks in the, in the community. And, um, or it would make it available to the unserved folks. It not, it doesn't mean that they, the unserved people would opt for the, the broadband service. I don't know if Evan's still there, but that's, that's kind of the, uh, the, the gist of it as far as the ask of the towns. I didn't have a, a number to review with the Board of Selectmen at the last meeting, but I told you there would be this request, and I just don't see any way that taxpayers can come up with 108,000, uh, for, for, um, that subsidy, if you will, uh, prior to the end of the month. Um, so I, I, I've tentatively given the, the group that, that indication. At some point, hopefully soon, we're gonna see some of the federal infrastructure money coming down the bike, and, uh, there's been a lot of talk that a good portion of though, that is gonna go to broadband expansion. And, and, and hopefully that'll be the case, but, uh, you know, my recommendation, at this point at least, is that uh, the town, uh, should not be subsidizing the, um, the expansion of, of broadband, especially at that, that six-figure level. So, uh, that's kind of the gist. And, and Daryl and Tom were also at that meeting. I don't know if you've got anything to add to that.
I was just gonna ask Evan if he had anything to add to that, if that's all right, Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's get him.
Definitely.
So, uh, hi, everyone. I'm Evan Goodkelsey. For those of you who don't know me, I've been organizing the Newcastle-Damascotta Broadband Group. Um, so the numbers that Matt is referring to is what LCI basically came to the towns for an initial offer. The towns put up 30%. The, uh, LCI put up 30% of the total project cost, and then they asked the state for the 40% rest of it in a grant. Um, obviously, that's ludicrous, because if the town's not collecting revenue off of a 30% investment, then we would be pretty terrible members of the Shark Tank crew. Um, but I think it's appropriate to come up with another number, which I've given my recommendation is about 25,000. See if the county can then match that, see if we can leverage it from Connect Maine and go back to the drawing table and say, this is what we can do. But to Matt's point, the money that's coming down from the state, we are amongst a few towns that are ready now, and when the next tranche of the 200 million comes in, the field just got that bigger. So, it's really a now or never situation. The grant application that we're working on right now, the deadline is March 20th. So, it's not gonna be any different come when the 200 million comes down. They're still gonna be expecting a healthy match from communities that are interested.
More hand grabbing at it.
Exactly. And I don't have to tell you the supply chain and the manpower and the lack of everything, that it's just gonna be another bottleneck of slowdowns. So, it would really be advantageous to the towns to act now. But I know that there's 12,500 that just got approved from the special town meeting, but I'd love to see that doubled in a way or another.
Well, Tom, get your mic there.
We have to go back and get another town meeting to have the second tranche.
Well, we'd have to find a funding source, too, first, yeah. Um, I guess we get, you know, talk to Matt, I don't know where that would come from. The other 12, 5 at this point, but, um, it's, uh, yeah, consideration anyway, but we'll.
Yep. If it's 12,500 for now, then we'll see what the county would be willing to match. If they would, they can, worst thing we, they can do is say no.
Yeah.
And, but this is all, you know, this is, this is all leveraging more money, so.
Yeah.
That's the only way to look at it. That's all I would add.
I get a question for you. So, the unserved.
Yep.
Right now in the town, what would it cost the town to help in that process?
For the whole thing?
In the unserved?
Uh, I believe it was something around 300,000 and change. So.
Just get the, yeah.
Okay, so this number of 108,000 that Matt.
That was their 30% figure suggestion. That was really just, uh, trying to bait the hook and see what the appetite was, and I think they know that that was not gonna be met by anybody. I think, uh, Bristol, on their first application, did about 9%. They've since done some subsequent funding, so they've done a lot more there, but 30% is ridiculous, but something would be healthy to see if we can get a successful grant.
Yeah, so the, uh, I have the, I sent the PowerPoint. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I sent the PowerPoint.
You'll have to take the mic.
Julie, we'll grab a, a, a mic there, yeah, and we'll, uh.
Are the unserved on public roads or private roads?
Evan could answer that maybe?
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah.
Because the people on private roads still pay taxes, so you don't really count any part of it. You can look at it that way, and some people do, but.
Or you could look at it that they own property on a private road. They knew they would have to put the utilities into. I'm just saying, that, that's the, that's the other part of it.
Sure. And then if we did have, a lot of the, the other argument is, is if these roads were served, more properties would be built, and then the tax rate would go down for everybody else, because there'd be more houses being built.
The, 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 the goal of the broadband is what? 100%? Everybody gets broadband?
Universal access.
Find out who, right, who, who pays for it, yeah. Who's based for it, yeah, yeah.
Well, tell you right now, this is, this is a shake now or rest in peace.
Yeah.
This is the once in a generation opportunity.
Thank you, Evan. Yep.
Oh, yeah, we've been doing this for eight, eight months now.
Yeah. Evan's been doing a lot of, yeah, so they'll shoot leather there, uh, doing some research, so, yeah, so, uh, thank you, Evan.
Again, I get one last comment on that is here at school, we know that there are families that don't have those, uh, internet and even teachers that didn't have the internet service. So, it made it very difficult. They would either have to come out here and sit in the parkamart or go to McDonald's. So, we do have to consider that a little bit as far as what this, you know, helped the school with, especially during this pandemic issue.
It doesn't mean that you're going to have takers, and sometimes those rates are very high, just for those people who can't afford it. You know, that's a, that's a big bill.
Yeah.
Talking about people who don't have the internet. And I'm, I'm not saying one way is good or the other. I was just curious.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. One more comment on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that these folks who don't have broadband aren't in the position they're in because they can't afford it. They're in the position they're in because nobody is serving them. The companies that provide the service are not providing it at those locations. They're not impoverished necessarily. They just aren't in a house that has a wire point. They have kids, too. Those kids go to this school. We gotta make sure those kids can do their work from home when they have to.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So, all right, we'll, uh, we'll move on here. Uh, I think, Matt, you have one more under your town manager notes.
Yeah, can you hear me? I was trying to, I wish, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was trying to interject earlier when you were talking about the cost. Uh, the, the PowerPoint that I sent all of you and that those of you who were at the, the, uh, the broadband meeting would have seen, uh, the total cost for the unserved, 103 addresses, 4.8 miles, uh, is $347,000. And if we were to get the Connect Me grant, it would, and the, the, you know, what LCI share would be, that would bring it down to the 108,000 I referred to. And then there's a, 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 a totally different and much higher number to bring the whole community up to a, uh, a hundred in, hundred out, uh, or I, I mean, uh, yeah, a hundred in, hundred out, uh, megabyte, uh, per second, uh, level. That's, that's 1.2 million. So, uh, we're talking some sizable dollars. There are, as, as the speaker just said, there are some areas like Nissan Farm Road that does, that do not have, the people there do not have service. So, it is a private road, but, um, uh, it, I, I think it still needs to have service at some point, and hopefully, LCI, um, can step up along with, uh, perhaps the use of some, uh, broadband grant money and maybe a much smaller, um, uh, town contribution to get those on Nissan Farm Road and the, the camp roads and the other parts of town, uh, service. So, that's it on that item, for at least for my, my list.
Thank you, Matt.
Um, and then, uh, we have a just pulling up my agenda here. We have a March uh, 2nd, uh, public hearing, um, that is for the Hodgston Street, uh, Drainage and, uh, Road Reconstruction Project. Uh, I shared with the board that our, um, uh, our initial letter of, of interest, uh, uh, letter for that, or, uh, application for that project did pass the mustard, and we were able to get the go-ahead to complete the full, full, uh, application. Uh, that a project requires a public hearing. So, uh, that's why I've scheduled that for March 2nd. We could do it March 16th, but, uh, that meeting's pretty full with the other public hearings that we've got scheduled. I've notified all of the neighbors about that and, uh, other people who are interested. So, hopefully, we'll have a good turnout, and we'll be able to demonstrate uh, to those who read the minutes of that meeting, that, uh, there, there definitely is a need. And I believe that's all I had under town manager items. Yeah.
Thank you, Matt. Well, uh, it looks like Haas is ready, and we're gonna give him the floor at this point, so. He's got a, yeah, Haas got a mic. Good to see you. Take your time, Haas.
So I can sit up here in front of you?
Yeah.
Here.
I get.
I'm still puffing, so.
All right, take your time.
Take a moment to read it.
Take your time.
When I pack in the day, one of my jobs, I had over 50 clients, who were, 30 of them were Fortune 500 firms. My job was to help them plan for the future, 10, 20, 30 years out. I'm presenting this to you, coming from that point of view. This book, which I've outlined on, on the back, is fantastic in terms of giving us all the background we need, the history of the science to know what's coming at us in terms of C-Rise. If you look at that, Daryl, the page there with, has the outline of the chapters. I've been giving such a book to governing boards such as yourself. I've seen them want to pick, read chapters out of order. That's why I put it the way I did. You could write in next to each chapter what bunch they're reading it. Uh, sometimes a board like you might go to the final section, which is about who, how you're gonna resolve things and get things done.
Skip to the end.
But I might suggest to you guys is stay with the first section. Reason? This is tough stuff. This gives you all the facts and the science and why it's inevitable. And once you understand that, then you can believe in doing the other work. Until you understand that, you won't believe in doing the other work. All right? And for your information, that's less than a page a day for the rest of your. And just to make it easier.
Got more in the bag of tricks there, don't you?
Is there a book report due when it's all over?
Yeah, yes. Thank you. Yeah, he's right behind you. Just grab the, the, make sure you get the mic.
There's the actual possibility that we have a couple feet within the decade because of the flight escalation. In any event, there was an article just in the past week.
In any event, there was an article just last week. Saying a foot within, by the fifty, by twenty fifty. That's very, very optimistic. The point is, that if you start now, and you're thinking and planning as a community. About these issues. And it just becomes part of the background, as I suggest in the comprehensive plan. Then you will be planning and you will be asking questions. Josh has the mentality for this, he proved it. In asking questions of the waterfront plan. He asked. What's the lifetime of the wall? Well, here we're asking, what's the lifetime of anything we're planning due to sea runs? Right? And if we instill now, this kind of thinking. We can have a community approach to planning for the future, rather than people getting hysterical at some point in the future. Well, they will anyway, but. I think you know an important. I just learned of this book in the last couple of weeks. And I knew I had to give it to you. Even though it takes quite an effort. You have any questions for me? Or do you want to discuss this?
Uh, I'm sorry, I can't.
I'd like to thank you for offering us this book, and I'm sure we'll all take.
What?
I'd like to thank you for offering this book to us.
I can't understand a word. He's thank, thanking you for offering the book to us, Haas, yeah. And likewise, yeah, I think Tom speaks for all of us, right? We, we appreciate you coming in.
Everything's going kaput.
It's all right, well.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So I'd like you to vote tonight unanimously to do it.
To read the book, yeah.
I'm, I mean, I'm gonna stick to you, right?
Yeah.
I just thought you would stick it to me.
As an official action item with the.
I, I know he's gonna ask me questions every time he sees me, so I have to be prepared.
You know what?
Jo, Josh wants to be prepared, he knows he's got, you're gonna ask him questions, so. He, he's, he's gonna be prepared, he's gonna read it.
You're an optimist. I doubt that I'll be here.
He'll be here. Haas, thank you for, it's good to see you, thank you for coming out.
You have any questions, I, I'm here to discuss this.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, uh, this is, it's something I've been tracking this and worrying about it for thirty years.
Sure, sure, yeah. Well, I think, uh, we, we, we'll all get a chance for you to read it, that, that are, you know, in, in between. Business and whatnot, and, and, and take a look, and, and, uh, we appreciate you.
It is very cogently written. The guy who's writing it couldn't have better credentials. Over five thousand hours and scuba diving for example. I mean, this is a, an ocean scientist. He's been chairman of the Costo Society, et cetera. He's got an earlier book. Two thousand twelve, I think it's referenced on the back. But anyway, and the Angus King introduction is right there. Yeah, yeah, we'll have to move inland.
To move inland, yeah. And the, the movie hasn't come out yet, right? We can't skip to the movie?
Have you seen Don't Look Up?
Not yet, Haas, not yet. Any, any questions from?
Well, we got a book right now, and I gotta read it, so, then you can start asking questions. I'm going to read it.
Oh, okay, my hearing's kind of bad. Yeah.
But are there Cliff Notes on this, Daryl?
I don't know, I don't know, it looks like it's too new to have Cliff Notes, yeah, so. Uh, thank, thank you, yeah, I, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure we'll all get a chance to, to, to read it. Um, take, take a look and, and, uh. Hopefully, yeah, we'll, you know, we, we, we're gonna see you at the next meeting and you can ask some questions and see, you can test us, so, right?
This has been my companion for four years, four years ago now. Could be four years. But I can tell this, it's useless, it's almost everything. But that's beside. This is a beautiful thing. I know you guys are dedicated to it, most of you grew up here. I want to support you the best I could, this is the best I can do.
Thank you.
The one thing I would have you keep in your mind is. The earlier and the sooner you can spread this kind of thinking to your other community. The easier the transitions will be. And it's, it's like. It's no, we're not talking two feet, it's three feet. By the time the glaciers are done, we're collecting twenty or thirty. Or more.
Haas, I, I would, I disagree with you, this is the best you can do, you, you've been involved with, I mean, how long? Have you and Josh been battling back and forth across the table here, so?
For a long time.
You've been involved heavily in, in town planning and.
No, we have fun.
Yeah, and, and committee work and whatnot, so I, I, I think, uh, uh, that's, that's something to be, be said, and we recognize that. Appreciate it, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We can get it back, are you going, Evan, are you going back to town office? Okay, can we give you something to take back to Matt, yeah?
Thank you, Haas.
One of those for Matt too, right?
Thank you, man, you're thinking better than I am.
Okay, guys.
More than welcome to hang out with us, there's. I said, you're more than welcome to hang out with us, Haas, we're getting to the exciting stuff now.
Hey, hey, Daryl.
So it's not anything big, it's just, well, what's the length longevity of this project? If we've got fifty years till a seat gets set up?
Hey, Daryl. Daryl, can you hear me?
Good to see you, Haas, yeah. Right, we'll move along to our list of official action items.
Hey, Daryl.
Are you still back there somewhere?
Yes, can you hear me?
You want me to go down through them, or you?
No, if I, if I could. Can I speak, okay, um. So, yeah, I think people may wonder why I'm on the TV screen and not there, I, I believe I've had an exposure to, um. Covid and, um, I, I just didn't want to create a, uh, mass spread event tonight, even wearing a mask, so. I, I'm sorry, I, I can't be there in person. Let's see, yeah, going down, I, I don't have any, uh, comments on the first one, that's pretty self-explanatory, the transfer deed.
All right. Something we've been working on, this is the transfer deed for Gilbert Gay LLC. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, and.
Go on number two, Matt.
Yeah, number two, um, I, I, I sent you all a note very late in the day, I had sent you the, uh, the. Uh, proposals from the three banks. Um, but I hadn't summarized them for you, I reviewed them with bond counsel yesterday. And the way it stacks up is in order of the lowest rate. Uh, bath savings, three point nine percent interest. Uh, the first, three point nine nine percent, so. Nine, one thousandth of a percent higher, and then. The one I had reviewed with you earlier, Camden National, uh, three point five three percent. So if you go with, if you go with the bath.
Change, I thought that, uh, the first was three point five three or something.
Okay, so the cover letter from the first says three point three five. But if you look at the amortization table that they were required to provide, you'll see that the APR is actually. Uh, the three point three nine nine. And the reason for the difference is because in their proposal, they used a three hundred and sixty day. Year, and th, they were all required to give a three hundred and sixty five. Day year and the amortization table. So if you, and, and it is at a three hundred and sixty five day year, so, uh, if you compare apples to apples. They are, as I said, uh, point nine basis points higher than bath savings. And I, I called them just to confirm that with them, that that was. Uh, the difference, and they did say, yes, the, the actual interest rate that we would be paying is, this is the first, is three point three nine nine. So the difference is a fraction, it's a, it, it turns out to be a, a thousand dollars, roughly a thousand dollars difference in interest over fifteen years. But the bath savings number is lower. And if you compare the bath savings quote to the Camden National Bank quote. Over the life of the loan, assuming we went the full fifteen years, there's a thirty five thousand. Uh, dollar, one, one hundred ninety eight dollar difference, uh, thirty five thousand, two hundred dollar difference between the, the two. So, yeah, I'm recommending you go with, uh, the bath savings. They're all, you know, all of them are, are, uh, banks with local offices. And, um, yeah, but, but the rest of their proposals are, are the same, because that's what we required in the RFP. Excuse me.
Okay, on that, any questions for Matt on? That, okay. So do we hear remote, Matt, you need us to read the charter guidelines?
Yeah, you need to waive the charter guidelines because we limited the proposal to just those banks that have offices in Damascada, the five banks.
I'll make a motion to waive the charter big guidelines and approve a proposal for the town's two point two five five million dollar bond issue. With bath saving, sorry, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Here is, yeah.
Thank you, and I, I did send, I, uh, if you could, you can hear me. Uh, I did send a draft RFP to the Public Works Committee a, a little over a week ago. So waiting on that, if you want to add that additional shoulder work that Mark, uh, mentioned earlier, we'll have to do that. Uh, my preference, it, and, and I. I indicated this previously, that, uh, my preference would be to hire an engineer to work on this for us, and, um. Yeah, look at the RFP, uh. Make sure that that's something that, that's okay, and, and, and there, from their, uh, perspective. The RFP template that I'm using is from Maine Local Roads, it's the one we've used for the last two, uh, Public Works paving RFPs. But I would like to have an engineer review that.
You know, I'll add to it, Matt, I think that you send out that to the public works, you should be sending it to the full board.
Uh, I'll have a disagreement with that, uh, Public Works Committee will review that and then bring it to the board. That's what, uh, what we've been tasked to do. And if you want it, if you have a problem with that, then the board will decide that from here on out, we might as well disband the Public Works Committee.
Well, I'll add to this too, is in the town charter, that when you have a committee, you're supposed to be having minutes, we've never seen any minutes.
Uh, you have seen the minutes, and the board has not met, uh, since you last brought that up, Mark, that the committee has not. Uh, met since, um, since, uh, you, you last brought that up.
Because we've heard numerous times, and all the, all the information's been coming direct, but we thought we'd go over it this time. Because it's a two point two five five million dollar project that we ought to look at it. And then bring it to the board, which would be a March second meeting, so if you guys want the information now, we'll give it to you. Nothing's hidden.
Currently, where is, uh, it was sent to the Public Works Committee, you guys haven't reviewed it yet?
We have yet, haven't had time to review it yet.
Okay, when, when is that, when is that meeting, Josh?
Uh, we're gonna try to figure something out, but. Time is kinda, been kind of wacky lately for me, so I'm sure probably this week we'll get, get things settled out. But if, if you have no confidence in our committee, then we'll just disband it, you guys can take it from here.
No, I don't, I, I don't, I don't think that's the question on the table, I think it's the, uh, or the comment on the table is, or just, uh, transparency.
We've been very transparent, all information goes to the Board of Selectmen. We come with a recommendation, if you don't like our recommendation, you change it, which is fine. But let us do our job before it comes to the board.
Uh, I think the only comment I'm seeing is those meetings are supposed to be in public. And if you can televise them, like it says in the town charter, all some say.
It doesn't say televise them in the town charter, it does not say that. The concern is, Mark. Can you hear me? I don't, I don't know. Now, uh, Mark is an owner of Hager Enterprises. And what he's asking is to be able to review an RFP that his firm is gonna build on, uh, bid on. I think that's a definite conflict of interest. I mean, he's already approved a two point, and a two and a quarter million dollar bond proposal. That typically, Hager Enterprises is the only one that bids on. Now, I think it's more appropriate to have this reviewed by the Public Works Committee, and then the rest of the board approve it with Mark abstaining.
And, and I've abstained from everything that you've done, is all I'm saying is when you have the Public Works Committee, that needs to be held in a public forum.
The meetings are recorded. And just like the cemetery committee, the land use advisory committee. And the other committees, the comprehensive plan committee, they are all public, but we're not televising them unless you want to pay. Unless you want to pay LCTV two or three times as much as what you're paying them already. I, I just think it's a conflict, Mark, and, uh, I, I would be, uh, I would be remiss if, as your manager, I didn't point that out to you.
As long as I've been on the board, I've never seen a copy of the minutes of any public works meetings.
What you, okay.
Since we've asked everything, we've tried to be more transparent and do it with the Board of Selectmen as a whole. So that's what we've been doing lately, now we have this major project, we want to go over, over everything, which will be recorded. Which will be transparent, and I have, in fact, I have a hard time with this, Mark, because yes, you are going to, your company is going to be bidding on this major project.
And it may be, it may be the only bidder.
I, I, I question your motives.
I disagree.
Before we get off, too, too far off topic, gentlemen. Let's make sure, I, I, yeah, we understand that, uh. The bid process or the bid package. Typically goes through a review through the, uh, Public Works Committee. As far as, I understand with transparency in the, uh, uh, charter, all the committees. Need to have minutes reported, it's not, you know, like, so, I don't know. Where those are, how we get them, but.
They have had minutes, they are sent to the board.
So I guess as a Public Works Committee member, I, I'd like to know, do you want us to continue, or do you just want us to say the heck with it and disband? Is the majority of the board want us to continue or not? Does the majority of the board want us to continue or not for the Public Works Committee?
I don't, I don't think any of the board is asking to disband the Public Works Committee at all.
I just want to make sure, are we allowed, are we going to be allowed to do our job? Are we gonna be micromanaged?
Do your, do your review, and we'll continue that process to come back to the board with the recommendations. I, I don't know if I'm understanding for Mark, I don't want to speak for anybody here, but just, I, I, it's not on, over the top to ask for minutes, I guess, or, or from that matter, for any committee, it's. I don't think so.
Absolutely, that's all I'm asking, is I want to see, make sure there's minutes, and those meetings at the Public Works Hall, those are in public.
The, the questions of conflict of interest aside, that's a different discussion at this point, I think, as long as we have, as long as there's minutes, I guess, for the charter, for all committees, but that's a different, I think that's a different discussion, so maybe we should, we should move on here through the, through the, I lost track of where I was. You know, we have on the table right now, we do, we have a, a large chunk of money that needs to be well-cared-for and, and properly dispersed to, to, to do the job, so we have to have some faith on both ends. We have to have some faith that our, the Public Works Committee is doing the right thing and, and checking everything over. We have to have faith that, you know, if the board likes some information, or public for that matter, would like some information on, on those activities, that it's all open, so, but we, we've got to, got to get it going, so, when you, when's the meeting scheduled, Josh, you don't have a meeting scheduled?
We don't have a meeting scheduled yet.
Yeah.
I mean, life goes on, there's other things that have been in my life to deal with, and I'm sure Matt's dealing with some stuff.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's asking anything personal of anybody here, just, just asking when, when might do. I know we're, we've talked about the cost, rising cost and whatnot, so I know probably we're all anxious to get the RFP out as soon as possible.
Yeah, and I guess the thing is, on the RFP, you know, we, we kind of, Matt, had something in the works to try to draft a template to go by, but until we get town approval, they spent some money, we didn't want to waste too much time on it, so now we'll go to work, so.
What was that in reference to, Josh, on the tem, template?
For the template for the RFP.
Okay.
Josh, as you know, I'm new here, so could you help me understand who's on the Public Works Board or Committee? It is myself, George Packer, Matt, Lou, that's Public Works. Okay, all right, thanks.
And they typically don't have regular, yeah, it goes on a regular schedule, like it's, it's when things come up, Tom, they, they don't have like a regular, you know, every two weeks, so it's, it's not always something on the, on the docket, but.
The board, the, the committee typically meets when we have bids due back in, and we have the minutes from when the board, I'm sorry, the committee met and, and decided on a certain bidder, so or recommended a certain bidder to the board. So we do have those minutes. There's certainly no attempt to not have total transparency.
Okay, let's move on here, where we are, we're at here.
I've ended the agreement.
Number three. Number three, Matt, on your official action items.
The board directed me to put on the agenda the, the contract that the, the union had proposed, so that's what's before you tonight, and by the way, all these documents are in that folder that Becky brought over for you to sign. It's a $3 an hour increase for the officers on top of the, the approximately $3 an hour that was already in there for 2021, 22, and that would be effective July 1. You're amending a three-year contract after the first year.
Admitted contracts, everybody seen that? You want to, you have to amend the contract?
Yep.
Good, okay, all right. Yeah, we, we have it, Matt, we've seen it. Well, we have a motion on the table.
I'll make a motion, we accept the amended agreement with the Damascada Police Officer Union.
Second.
Second, okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Ananmas, all right, Matt, let's move on here to Booth Bay Harbor Planning Services Agreement.
I've been trading phone calls with Julia at, she's a town manager in Booth Bay Harbor. She said that her board approved the agreement with a couple minor changes, and again, I've been trading phone calls with her, so I don't know what those are, so I'm asking you to approve the planning services agreement with Booth Bay Harbor, the town of Booth Bay Harbor, in substantially the same way that, that you have in front of you tonight, and you're authorizing, you'd be authorizing me to sign that on your behalf.
I make a motion, we accept an agreement with the town of Booth Bay for sharing the services of a full-time planner.
Booth Bay Harbor, right?
Yes.
Yeah, make sure of that.
Did I say something different?
No, it says Booth Bay, and you read it off, that's fine, yeah. Do we have a second, sorry?
Second.
Tom seconds, okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, unanimous, all right, number five, Matt.
You saw that the governor signed the D, transferring the, the land underneath the Information Bureau to the town, and so we jumped right on that, and I'm asking you to approve that we last reviewed with you, the lease we last reviewed with you in November, so, I don't, I think I saw John Roberts there, but this is a pretty exciting event that, that's happening right now, where we're able to, to get that property, obtain that property, and then give a very long lease to the Chamber to, to do their remodeling and, and make use of that wonderful little cube of a building.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the lease of the Information Bureau property of the Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? There, I like that, John. You happy now?
Yeah.
Should we have signed it?
Should we have asked the $2? Should we have asked the $2 a year instead of one?
All right. So, Matt, is that it on your?
No, there's one more item, it's a tabled item, and I don't know if, if you want to approve that tonight or not, that is the interlocal agreement with the ambulance service, or for ambulance services.
I asked Matt to send out the, the agreed-upon agreement for interlocal services for the ambulance service to all the board members. I don't know, I don't have copies here for signature. I didn't anticipate that, but if you've already seen it and read it, maybe we could approve it and sign it at a later date.
Yeah.
Matt, you say something?
Yes, the town, the, the town meeting has already given you the authorization to approve it, so whenever you, you'd like to approve it, it's, that's, that's your.
Nothing has changed on the formulas for the next couple of years that you haven't already seen, and it was only some minor changes to the interlocal from the last time you saw it. Plus, I sent out the, the latest version to all of you. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any issues with it?
I don't have a question, anybody have any questions with Tom on the interlocal? Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement for ambulance services.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Aries, oh, all right, Matt, anything else to add?
I don't, I don't have anything more.
We'll, we'll start with discussion items, Tom, anything?
No, I have nothing tonight.
Lou?
I have nothing.
All right, Mark?
The only thing I'd like to see us do is, as far as teaming up with other towns around us that need catch basin cleaning, striping sidewalks, we, we've never been able to get our, our crosswalks done before the Memorial Day. I'd like to at least look at that, if the Public Works could look at that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark, Josh?
I, I got a question for Matt. Has a plow contractor yet fixed a sand salt building?
No, they haven't.
Matt, you hear that question from Josh?
Yes, I answered it. I don't know if you can hear me, but I said, no, they have not made the repairs to the damaged building.
Do they have an updated time, timeframe when they're gonna fix this building? It's been two years.
No, it's been two years. Hughes reminded them, but they say they lost the parts.
It'd be nice to get that fixed.
It would be.
All right. I have nothing to add this evening, so. Motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Two seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Includes our meeting to this evening. We've got a bunch of stuff to sign coming down through here, so, yeah, so we have a lease agreement there. Minutes. Four documents coming down through there, plus the warrant.